Your computer, that one says 9:59. But we'll go with 10:00. Good morning, it's October 29th, 2019, 10:00 a.m. And I'm calling to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. And if you would care to, please rise and join us. Plaid your wings.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Thank you, and nearly happy Halloween and happy I think it'll go away today. So, I would entertain a motion for the adoption of today's agenda.
So move, second.
Okay. Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Agenda adopted. Next, we'll go to public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address any topics on today's agenda. If any members of the public would like to address any topics, please come forward to the microphone. Seeing nobody, I will close public comment number one. And we do not have any agency reports. Next is consideration of minutes of the October 22nd, 2019 meeting. I would entertain a motion.
I move approval of the October 22nd meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Minutes adopted. Next, consideration of personnel actions, we have none. Consideration of claims, I'd entertain a motion for approval of claims as listed.
I would so move as presented. Second.
Okay. Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Claims are approved. Next is the consent agenda. Were there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull number four. So I would move approval of the consent agenda with the exception of item number four, consideration of the internal food drive.
Are there any, okay. Any other? Okay, then, I'm going to, let's see, a second for the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Oh, no, we're doing everything but that. Excuse me.
That's okay.
Excuse me. So, to consent agenda, with exception of four. Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Okay, now, let's discuss item four.
Item four. So, I just want, hold it to want to bring notice and make a request to staff. This is a request for a short internal food drive to help our two largest pantries in the county meet to the demand that has arisen suddenly and that they're all out of donated food. I discussed it last week, and so I put the letter of request on our agenda for this week. I want to note that this is completely voluntary for people who are interested in donating. Take a look at this memo, because the food pantries are out of certain items that they cannot purchase from the food bank, despite the fact they may have money to do that. And then there's some other issues. So I just want to say thank you in advance, and my request to staff is if facilities could set up just a table down in the first floor, along the wall where we've put for food drives in the past. And other than that, this is just as we can get food over here, or I or one of the other two supervisors will go ahead and drive around and pick up whatever items are donated, or people care to donate.
Could you do the work order to facilities management, asking for the tables, so they have that in record?
I can, yeah.
Are you willing to put a sign up?
I will. I guess I'm willing to put that sign up.
I won't be here Friday. I could probably help on Thursday deliver some food, but I'm going to be busy today. I don't have time to do any of that. If you could do those.
Yeah, I'll take care of that today, and then it would just be Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. It's just whatever, anybody could maybe grab, a can of soup. That's one of the items right now that they need. So if you could just bring something from home, or canned fruit. Because as I pointed out last week, like Silvestre Army only has canned apricots. Not very appealing to 10-year-olds, so.
Would you also be thinking about sending out an email to all employees, because there's only a few employees here?
I can, with your guys' consent. I would be happy to send that out.
Well, you have any other questions?
No, my only question is, why was it just for the rest of the week?
Because last week, there was just a short discussion about whether we had enough staff to have a sustained food drive. And when I did get the email back from Cassandra Eames with Team Story, she said, once we do our thing here today, that she would take a look at how Team Story, some volunteers might be able to help us, maybe transport the food. But we really don't have the effort to do a sustained one. This will help get through. And somebody may be organizing a big food drive this weekend with the Coanians, okay? And at one of the grocery stores. And then I know they've got another one for mid-month, yeah.
I would also point out, we have another drive going right now, because we've got the Blue Star Mothers.
Yes.
And hopefully that won't be confused or detract from that.
No, and that's a good point, Linda. So when I put the sign up and I send out the email, I'll identify those items specifically that they're looking for right now. And I'll remember to remind people about also the Blue Star Mothers.
I think that would be good. Thank you.
Sure, thank you very much.
Is there a motion to approve the internal food drive?
I'll make the motion to approve the internal food drive from October 30th to through November 1st.
Second.
Okay.
The first is, you're right.
Right, through November.
Okay, yes, I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we will go to, let's see, item 10, is that correct? Let me make sure I'm not skipping something. Yes. Item 10 is a public hearing for consideration of resolution number 20-31 to enter into a purchase agreement for the purchase of county property, including an escrow for deed and abstract and installation contract locally known as parcel 02-18-300-315, Conservation Department. And County Attorney's Office.
Good morning.
Would you lead us through this? Tell us what's going on.
We're well represented here this morning to chat with you about this project. And I'll just kick it off here, and that is that we're this morning asking for your consideration on entering a purchase agreement on some property north of Story City, excuse me, south of Story City along the Skunk River.
Should we draw it up on the table?
Yeah, right.
They're the only real mountains in Iowa.
Any questions?
No. We were serious about it.
The landowner, Rosemary Oshheim, approached us to kind of gauge our interest in a portion of her property there. And so, much as these kinds of inquiries go from landowners, then we walked the property and had our board members, some of our board members, walk the property. And Dr. Peace here was one that joined us and really determined that, boy, this is a high-value, a high-value piece of property from an ecological standpoint, environmental standpoint, right on the river, has significant water quality benefits in the protection of that property. And so, we decided that we'd like to take the next steps and explore some options with Ms. Oshheim and see if we could find potential common ground here. And so, we've endeavored to do that, and Ethan has been instrumental along the way in helping. As you know, anytime we look at a potential land acquisition, we've got kind of a recipe book or menu of different methods that we could go about it. And this is one that we have not, wasn't in that book previously. We haven't done anything like this before. But we did get an appraisal done on the property, came to agreement on price and mechanism, if you will, that's outlined in this contract. And that is essentially purchasing it on contract over the next eight years, and offering annual payments for that. Taking possession now. And that worked for the landowner because, for many reasons. She really wanted to, she doesn't want to move yet. The house is not on the property. It's on an adjacent property. She wants to maintain kind of quiet enjoyment of that property. She has invested a lot of energy and resources into that property, into the prairie plantings on it, all the wildflowers on the property. She has really put a huge effort into that and wants to be able to maintain that. She is receiving CRP payments on the property now, and this agreement allows her to maintain, keep receiving those payments. And then she's offering to do this interest-free. And so that's really the point for us, that said, you know, this is something that the Conservation Board feels is very palatable, very equitable, and gives us the ability to get some property acquired at a low annual payment. So with that, I guess maybe, Jim, you walked the property. Do you want to chat a little bit about it from the board's perspective?
Yeah, from Jim Peace, member of the Story County Conservation Board, this particular property is, fulfills several of our objectives. Number one, it's right on the river. It helps us continue to connect that green belt along the river. Number two, it's adjacent to, just across the road from this is Lequal Access, so it's adjacent to some existing property that we already have. And number three, it's really high-quality. In walking the property, not only is it, you know, on the river and wooded very nicely and has a piece of prairie that they have planted, converted from cropland some years ago, but it, in addition, there are very few landowners that hand you a botanical list of the species that are there. And this is really a very high-quality piece in terms of species composition, lots and lots of things that they have individually, and these are all, not only native to Iowa, but Iowa genotype, so that they're from this area as well. So they were very careful in planting that. So it's really fulfills all of the things that we like to see. And the landowner approached us, which we like to see as well. So they want to preserve, we're willing to serve as that agency that can make this happen, and it's a very high-quality piece of land. So we really felt that it fulfilled all of our criteria for land acquisition.
And then as far as the funding goes, the Conservation Board has unanimously decided to make this recommendation, and that the funding come from the Energy Transfer Fund, which, as you know, was given to the county a few years ago. And there's still enough balance in there to handle this project, so. With that, we entertain any questions you may have.
Let me first say that I'm going to abstain from voting today, because I know the seller. Are there any questions from the other board members?
I don't have any questions. I think that, I guess my comment is, you know, I think it's great that somebody has approached the Conservation Board and is interested in maintaining the land that you have there. And my main question was the funding, and you answered that, Mike, right away. So I appreciate that information right up front as well.
Any questions?
No questions. Once again, this is a pretty unique opportunity, so it's exciting.
So if there are no questions, and this is a public hearing item, so open the public hearing. Any members of the public who wish to comment on this proposed purchase, can please come to the microphone. Seeing nobody moving to the microphone, I will close the public hearing. And we have had discussions, so I will entertain a motion.
I will move consideration of resolution 20-31 to enter into a purchase agreement for the purchase of the county property, including an escrow for deed and abstract and installment contract locally known as parcel number 0218-300-315.
I will second that excellent motion.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just want to make note, I too know Mrs. Oshheim, but not probably as well as does Supervisor Merkin.
So, Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin abstained. Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks very much for all your hard work on this. Okay. Next, then, we will go to additional items. Assistant Auditor Lisa Markley on consideration of resolution appropriations amendment.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I told you a couple weeks ago when I was here that I would be coming forward with appropriation amendment to appropriate some additional dollars. It's that time of the year where we're getting, we started with 50% for most departments, and we're getting to the time of year where we need to appropriate some more dollars for them to spend. What I put in front of you today, this resolution appropriates 100% for the elected officials' budgets. It appropriates salaries plus an additional 45%, so the rest of the departments are at approximately 95% with the exception of their salaries, which is at 100%. And that's the appropriation, not the budget. Because the budget is only 95% of salaries overall, okay? I think that's all the information I have on it. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
None, just making the comment that this is a very routine process that occurs a couple times a year, because after we allocate the monies through the budget, then we have to give a separate vote to actually allow Mr. Markley to move them into the correct accounts, so that they can be spent.
I have no questions.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for resolution 20.32.
I would so move resolution 20-32 for appropriations.
I second that motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you very much.
I'm going to switch chairs here. I am sorry.
Okay, now we have Amelia Shoneman from Planning and Development for a resolution on an agricultural subdivision. Good morning.
Good morning. How's we pull out here? Okay. So this is the FOSH Agricultural Subdivision. It's located near Interstate 35 and has frontage on 570th, so it's south of Ames, north of Cambridge and Huxley, that area, and really close to the Dakota Access Station here on Interstate 35, if you're familiar with that location. So it is a 38.79 net acre parcel. You can see from the aerial image that the majority of the parcels in rural crop production, but in the southwest corner, you do have some agricultural buildings and a farmstead. And that's what they're dividing from the ag land. The property owner's son assists with the agricultural operation as he's available now. And in the future, when the father retires, will be taking it over, and so would like to live on the property. They own adjacent farmland as well. You'll see some photos of the dwelling here on the next couple pictures. This dwelling replaced the original farmstead, and it was actually a move-on. The dwelling was from, they moved it on to a property that was condemned for a DOT project. So that's what you'll see in the next couple photos. So this is looking northwest at the new dwelling on the property. You can see some of the ag buildings here, too. So again, the dwelling, and this is looking west towards the Dakota Access property, and looking north on 570th at some of the ag buildings. Again, here's some of the ag buildings. So this is the proposed division. You can see it includes all of the ag buildings and the dwelling, and then the crop land is on Lot 2. An agricultural subdivision requires that all new lots are for agricultural purposes. Again, we're not taking any land out of production here. It's really just separating the buildings so the son can occupy the dwelling and live on the property. And we do have notes on the plat about this property's supposed to continue to be farmed, and no zoning permits shall be issued. I will note that this is a subdivision because the property was divided once already to sell Dakota Access a piece of land so that they had frontage on 570th. So that, it was a roadway that was vacated by the county and then sold to Dakota Access, so.
Okay, that's the, there had been the unimproved road that was on there.
Yep.
Got it.
Let's see, surrounding land use, this is an agricultural conservation area, so it's supposed to remain in agricultural production. And generally, you do have large agricultural parcels around the property. There are a few dwellings to the north, there's two dwellings to the east, there's two pieces in agricultural production, and then the property owner actually owns and resides in the parcel across 570th to the east, so the father of the son that's moving on to the property. And then to the south, again, you have a couple pieces in ag production, and the Dakota Access parcel. And then to the west, you have one piece of agricultural land owned by the property owner and adjacent to Interstate 35, so that's this property. You can look west. This is from Lot 1, this is on Lot 2, and then the adjacent ag land to the west as well. And this is looking east. You can see the other dwelling owned by the father across the street on this property, and some of the ag buildings and equipment on that property across the street. And this is looking north. I won't go through the requirements for an ag subdivision plat, but they are met in this case. We did route this for review by county departments and did send notice, have not received any comments. And we also did have the city of Cambridge and the city of Huxley take action, as cities within two miles, the city of Cambridge waived their right to review, and Huxley approved the subdivision. And so, points to consider, again, we're not taking any ag land out, we're just creating a new property for the son to purchase and live on, who will be involved in the ag operation. All requirements for an ag subdivision are met. An additional divisions of this subdivision are not permitted unless the entire subdivision's required for plating purposes, and no zoning permit for a dwelling can be issued on Lot 2. So there's no new development proposed. And so staff recommends alternative one, which is approval. Any questions?
There's no plan to build on the Lot 2 then?
Uh-uh.
So it's simply so the son can purchase this part and not the entire farm?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yep. And the applicant's attorney is here today, too, can answer any questions, Mike Lewis, or confirm that point, so.
Good morning, that's true. In fact, the son grew up.
Would you come up to the microphone if you could speak to us, and introduce yourself for the record?
My name's Mike Lewis, and I represent Great Falls.
Good morning.
Good morning. Cody grew up on the property that we're talking about. Cody be the son. He would like to build there, and Dad isn't ready to give him 40 acres yet, so. So we get to divide it out. The property that was moved, or the building that was moved on to the property, is a friend of theirs that left the area. It was his home. Where that new house, or the moved-in house sits, was Cody's homestead, and where Craig and Cindy raised their family there. So really, nothing's going to change on that parcel, that entire 40-acre parcel, except the building, the residents will look.
There was one residence, it's just being replaced with another residence, and they're going to give that piece of land to their son.
In fact, they were quite shocked to understand that they had to actually do this, because when we sold to Dakota, we didn't realize that they had done a subdivision, because they, of course, volunteered to do all the legal work, and then we found out when we came in to do this, that, oh, boy.
That happens.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Are there any questions, board members?
No.
Thank you. And, and anything else you'd like to know about this?
No.
Okay, then, I have no further questions either, so I entertain.
I would like to add that these folks have been incredible to work with, and very courteous, and patient, and professional, and kudos to them.
You're fine.
They made the whole process. My client was not real happy about having me do this. They kind of, they kind of soothed him, and he's okay now, so I'd just like to compliment them on their customer service, I guess.
They're very professional and very patient, we know that, and it's good to hear that also from the customers. So thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion.
I move consideration of resolution 20-32, the FOSH Agricultural Subdivision. 33, sorry, 20-33.
I would second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution 20.33. Any further discussion? Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Resolution's adopted. Thank you.
And hopefully his "oh, boy" is a, "Okay, that's done."
Thank you.
Now, we will hear from our engineer, Darren Moon, regarding the I-35 and 590th Avenue. And.
Good morning. I brought Scott Docstetter with me, District 1 P.D. engineer. Thanks for showing up on late notice.
Thank you. I didn't know when I saw you last Thursday or when it was. We would do this.
Okay, what we have on the end of the day is a pre-design agreement that the DOT drafted for us. for us. Entertains aren't something you do every day, so the process here, we don't have a precedent to go by, so it's another reason it's good to have Scott here with us. But the first step, as I understand, is this pre-design agreement, and then later on will be a pre-construction agreement, that'll get more into detail construction costs. I'll start out with just a few of my comments on the project as a whole. First, this is just a blurb from the DOT's public meeting. First step is in 2022, $10 million for the right-of-way bridge construction and grading. And then again in '23, another $9.1 million for the paving, lighting signs. That's kind of the timeframe looking at about three years away from this beginning. Here's the layout, so yellow lines are the new layout. Next screen shows, blue ones are the roads. When this project is completed, it is proposed to turn over for county maintenance and jurisdiction as well. I'll come back to that. Let me just get into some of my comments before I throw a little bit to Scott, so he may be answering some of those comments. This is my, my first time maybe more directed towards the pre-construction agreement, but I'm concerned about the detour when this, at some point, we're going to have to close R-70 to make this connection down here. So one, I want to keep this connection up to 30, as long as we possibly can open, because the detour routes south of here are difficult. It's eight miles down to Cambridge, and there's no crossroads. The other thing is, we'll probably request to leave this Sand Hill Trail open as long as we can, because once this gets closed, we've got Level B a mile this way, so it's going to be two miles over that direction, and a lot of gravel road traffic going to maintain. And if Sand Hill gets closed, there will be no direction that we can, people will all be across the interstate. So we've worked out the next agreement is how we can stage this and keep this open as long as possible, so we can minimize the time in future of this operation, and high level of use on gravel roads.
Darren, related to that use, not only is there cost involved to us in time, but we have to pay that, correct? There's no reimbursement for us maintaining those detours, correct?
There's some provisions for it.
Oh, okay.
Dust control, what we pay for by the DOT, and even additional use on secondary roads gets reimbursed with some form of the DOT.
Correct. Okay, I missed that. Thank you.
Secondly, 590th Avenue has been a point of attention with the board, but we want to make, this board didn't pass, is make sure to keep this open as long as possible for the use of the two ag facilities that are out here now with the better, as the newest one here. So the board has always requested to keep this open as long as possible, and I believe the DOT is proposing to build the frontage road and still leave this open until more development happens with interchanges closer to Nevada in the future. Scott, any comment on that?
Yeah, with our next project, we'll have an interchange somewhere to the east, and whenever that project comes in, all the accesses will be closed at that point in time. So 590th will be closed with our next project over towards the Nevada area.
So what is your, what are you looking at for a timeframe for 590th?
None of that's programmed.
Okay.
It's sort of, it's up to our commission on how a new project enters five-year program and what years.
Okay.
Scott, has, have you or Tony or others at the DOT had any conversation with Better and the other dealer across the street? I've drawn a blank right now. Okay. But had conversation with him about how this will impact them permanently? I understand, you know, that as you're building the frontage road, but do they see problems moving implements as opposed to being able to get right on 30 right now?
Yeah, I think they would prefer, long-term, to have an access right off Highway 30. You know, most everybody that loses their access would prefer to have access, so they've been at our public meetings, and have expressed concerns with all the proposals that we have that removes access.
Okay. Is it, from the DOT standpoint, is there a safety concern that they're bringing up that you feel needs to be addressed?
Yeah, from the department's perspective, anytime you have a road with 17,000 cars a day on it, which is pretty close to US 30 traffic, and have heavy side-road volumes, over time, those just generally are high accident locations across the state. So this is kind of a safety project with converting from ag grades to interchanges. Obviously, interchanges are the best that we have in terms of safety getting on and off the roadway.
Thank you.
Next, I just wanted to point out, the next slide might show that a little better, is the church traffic. We have two churches out here, and as you know, we've got a gravel road that goes up the side of the interstate and parallels it up to Lincoln Way. Ames recently annexed a large portion of that gravel road, so the county only has a quarter-mile stretch in here, but that happens to be where the houses are. This, right at this point, it turns private into the church. With the interchange being over 580th, we really don't know what that's going to do to impact the gravel, if more will use it, or maybe less, because they'll feel it's a safer way to get to it at this point. We really don't know the impact of it, I just wanted to point that out and say, we could see some traffic change. But we don't know what it's going to be.
I would expect it would increase.
Yeah, very possible. 250th traffic increase, that's some, I don't know what we do about it, it's just a byproduct of this. There's about seven or eight houses right here. I think they'll use the new frontage road to get over, but then there's another seven, eight houses real close to 250th, which is right here. They may pop on that to get over to the new interchange, and that would increase the gravel road traffic right here. Seven homes, they usually average eight to 10 trips a day, so, you know, it could be an extra 100 people a day on the gravel road. Just a concern. City of Ames maintenance, I just wanted to point out, the blue lines are what the DOT proposed to turn over to the county for maintenance and jurisdiction. Currently, the City of Ames actually maintains all the way down to Highway 30 and 580. So we'll have to redo our agreement with City of Ames, determine where their turnaround's going to be, if they're going to turn around at this interchange or come all the way down to either side, so we'll have to redo that, but I just wanted to point that out to you. We don't currently, just snow ice control, we don't maintain this stretch half a mile to the city of Ames. 241st to the county, I don't know if that was really addressed in this agreement. The stub here is paved, going back to the industrial area back here, and it's owned by the DOT at this point. With the closure here at Highway 30, I assume the DOT will probably ask that we maintain that as well, or will take over jurisdiction of it as well. I don't think it's stated in this agreement, so that was one of the main questions I had, what's going to happen with that stuff.
Yeah, that's kind of logically a county road, so we may look at this agreement and see if we want to add it to the agreement to shift that over. The road to the north, even though it'll be a county road, we'll probably add that to our, we've got an agreement with the county on swapping roads to plow. We'll just add that to our agreement, where since we're on that road all the time, we'll do the plowing on that road.
Yeah, and that kind of answered my next question. It kind of made sense to me, if we take this over from the DOT, and the DOT shop is on this road, if we could get some assistance and maintain that for a while there. Lastly, the way things are spelled out, I believe the DOT will pay for all these blue roads to be initially constructed, but after that point, they'll need the counties to maintain and pay for any future maintenance costs on those roads, so.
Correct.
Not dealing with interchange very often, I don't know if that's standard practice, or if there's any, I know when the DOT does transfer jurisdictions, sometimes they have some funding in the future assistance for county roads. We'll see some additional funds out of a reduced tax, based on, we'll add some, about three miles to our paving system. The formula that that's run through, we'll get the counties some additional funds, it's very complicated, so I don't even give you an estimate of what that'll bring in. But that'll essentially just take money away from other counties, it's not additional money added in the pot. Sometimes when the DOT does transfer jurisdictions, they give additional funds, but I don't know if that happens in interchange, is that just a question?
No, not in this particular case. You know, there was some questions on who should pay for it all, I think we've stepped up and said, "We're going to do all the construction 100% DOT, and then in return, you would own and maintain the roadways."
Thank you for that. The other option was not as attractive, okay?
Correct.
For the most part, that, those are all the questions I had, and I just wanted to point out, if you hadn't been involved in this process from the start, it really started with the interchange here in Nevada and S14, naturally, the accident count was so high. Through the years and the design changes, this intersection actually took over in believing of accidents, so this one kind of came to the top as what we'd be addressed first. So as far as the traffic safety perspective, I mean, they're pretty much in favor of this project. And the design, the first design was a half-mile in this direction. They both had their pluses and minuses. I like how this one kind of keeps the continuity of R-70 intact, so as far as the design, I'm in favor of the design. That's kind of how this, this came about, is kind of a lot of, I think you can say the church, churches have had a lot of accidents out there on Sundays.
Yeah, Sand Hill Trail gets to be heavily used on the weekends, Sundays, and then Wednesdays and Thursday nights, there's a lot of activities. We've got a really long left-turn lane developed right there along Highway 30 to get traffic off of US 30. So this interchange, I mean, it's really kind of the result of the interchange in Nevada we were working on, we had programmed, and the city came towards the end and said, "We don't want that project anymore," and the funds were kind of shifted over towards this direction.
I would like to go back to maintenance of the two frontage roads. Are there special considerations that we should be aware of, of maintaining those roads and maintaining your kind of access that we might not have experienced before with road maintenance? Are there special requirements?
I don't think so.
Increased costs?
We maintain roads over the interstate, which would be similar to this. I should point out that there's an IM that covers who maintains what when we have a crossing over a major four-lane like this. And the DOT still maintains the bridge over the interstate, and we kind of take over if a bridge approaches and go from there, as far as who's responsible for costs, if anything ever needs replaced. Maintenance-wise, the north-south would be fairly easy, we just pop over, we won't have to deal with this intersection anymore, like get across the traffic, so that'll absolutely help. Safety.
So what's in the yellow? Will it be maintained by DOT?
Correct, the ramps.
Yes, the interchange in Highway 30 obviously will be all DOT roadways.
Okay. And when you, you were talking about that local connector to the north, you said some of that would be maintained by DOT?
Yes, since we're, our garage is located right there, it's kind of logical that our plows are going to be coming and going all the time, so that's probably going to be the best-maintained plowed road in the state of Iowa.
So how far would you, just to your-
Correct.
You would go to there?
Yep.
Okay.
We currently maintain the Better's pavement out here, that will be extended a little bit to go up to the new frontage road, so we'll probably pop on over, and either come back and rehead south from there. The city currently doesn't stretch, we'll have to look that up.
So, so when you say that, so, I guess kind of going off Linda's, so from the Better over there and going, yep, going west, it's like, are you saying that the county would maintain that?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
And Scott, you said, this will be built now, and this will be left over?
Yes, you know, there's two conditions that would close that in the future. One, the next project over, and then all the entrances along Highway 30 will be closed between Ames and Nevada. Or two, if we run into some type of an accident issue there with the road being open, that that might, might prompt us to close the median and close that entrance.
And when would the work to the east be decided on? What's going to happen?
That's not in our current five-year program.
It's not in the five-year program?
It's not in the five-year program. There's, there's money to build a bridge across Highway 30 at S14 to connect up S6, Sixth Street and S14, to try to avoid that intersection that's just right over the railroad on Highway 30. So we've got money for a bridge overpass, but no interchanges, and then we need to, I've already met with the mayor and city manager to talk about what does that mean, how does that look with access connections off of that bridge overpass. But right now, there's no money programmed for any additional interchange or interchanges between this area and Nevada in our five-year program. More similar to the board, that as projects come forward, our commission would have to approve adding anything new to our five-year program in the future.
I know that the county would be responsible for some maintenance. Is there any potential kind of upfront costs that the county should be aware of, or?
Upfront is basically, we talked a little bit with our staffing issues already, and we have some big loss at this point, and so we're concerned about that. This is three years down the road, but this will add to those truck routes. So it'll just add more time for our truck, truck routes to get to these areas quickly. We might have to add a new truck route. We've already, we're doing some new paving on 13th Street, and we've had some new paving the past couple of years, so we're already looking at adding a new truck route, so I don't think it'd be a huge impact, but that's the biggest short term, it's just that quick maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm assuming at some point, it's logical, the cities will be annexing down this direction and taking over a lot of these roadways that we're building.
It's very possible. It's nice that there's a lot of people. The city will actually down to the front of the road by stairs. Technically, a lot of jurisdiction, half the portion of the frontage road. But other than that, I've formed this on even for review weeks ago, I think everything else in the agreement looks fine, except changes in that possibly swapping to 41st and get some assistance maintenance on that, if we can address that agreement. I don't have any other concern for the agreement.
So you would want to make that change before we approve the agreement?
Correct.
Okay, so, probably just defer action then on this? Because we do have the agreement in our packet.
Yes. I didn't think you probably, since it's the first time you've seen it, I didn't think you'd actually make that change.
Okay, well, we'll just wait then until you bring us final agreement.
What is the relative timeframe that we have to approve this by? Scott, do you have a deadline, or?
I don't think we have any strict deadlines, it's just our normal process as we begin design and buying right-of-way, we want to make sure everybody's on board with the long-range plan for what we're doing. So waiting a month or two is not a concern for me. We'll work with Darren to get these last details figured out, and then submit over an agreement.
Okay, great, great. Thank you. Thank you for the information, and Scott, thanks for coming over today.
Thanks, board, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Leanne Harder, consideration of post-modifications to the ordinance development and review guidelines.
Good morning. This is relatively simple. The Harder's office has some proposed revisions to the signature lines for ordinances and resolutions. The ordinance guide does include samples of that, and so we just needed to update signature lines. That's as simple as this is.
Thank you, because since my copy was all, you know, black and white and gray, I was a little confused about what it was we were changing.
It's just changing the signature lines on the draft ordinances that are in there, and then obviously the date on the cover from April to October.
I have no questions, then.
Yep, I don't have any.
Okay, entertain a motion? I would move that we approve the modifications that's presented to us today.
I'll put in a motion.
Get further discussion? None? Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Thanks, Leanne. Next, we have department reports, and we have Simakaski from out of Control. Good morning, James.
James, good morning. Yeah, that's what I thought, no puppies. No.
Are there any over at the shelter?
Oh, yes.
Are they no paws on the ground, or?
Um, yeah, we've got a really cute one, probably three months old. We just- Oh. I know, I'm going to send pictures out, it's adorable. And she's already house-trained, and she's just, I know.
I was hoping for the pig.
Oh, okay, so we've had two pigs.
You've had another one?
Yeah. So we had a pig that fell off on the interstate that was six pounds. One of our employees adopted and took it home, and it will live forever. Her last pig that fell off on the interstate lived to be nine. She just kept it as a pet. She lives in the unincorporated area.
Fortunately, because didn't it grow to be about 500 pounds?
Yeah, and then we got a 250-pound market pig in, now that we have in our little shed in the back, so, yeah. So, yeah, it's been a lot of livestock stuff lately, I'm not sure what that's about. But in front of you, you've got all the numbers and everything, so it's kind of flipped. I don't know why, but we're seeing, so far, for instance, in October, of animals coming in, we've had over 60. And the other months haven't been that heavy, so I don't, I don't even know what to say anymore. Just they come when they come, and we take them, is the best way to put it. We've got guinea pigs, and rabbits, and a pig, and snakes, and cats, and dogs, and I thought we were going to have horses. We've had several horse calls lately that we thought we were going to have to bring horses in, we were trying to fumble to find out where to put it, and we had seven cattle out on E29 the other day, so it's like, the livestock thing, we're just like, wow, yes, bring the building on, we're really ready for it.
Are the horses a situation, just one situation?
Well, for instance, some of them got, on Sunday, we were called, there were some running around down by the Maxwell area, and they, but they'd been seen on Saturday also. And everybody just thought it was kind of fun watching them run around, and it's not fun, because you know, we want to get them captured. Well, they ended up at a guy's house, and he thankfully put them in his pasture. Well, they ended up at a guy's house and he thankfully put them in his pasture and then we went about trying to find out who they belonged to, because I was on the phone for a long time calling everybody I knew down there trying to figure out where these two bay horses belonged. And then ultimately, we put it on our Facebook page and the people found out about who had them at their house. Otherwise, the guy, I'd talked to him, he was so nice, he was willing to keep them for us for a couple of days till we could, you know, find out who the owners were hopefully, but the owners did come and pick them up. So it's just been, we've kind of met it under the skin of our teeth, I guess, about having to bring stuff in. The cattle were herded back and I mean, it's just...
How do we handle that from responsibility of release? Are there any fees associated that we charge to the owners of the horses then?
So if it's a habitual problem, you know, we have some, we have people tell us that, well, my neighbor's horse runs all the time and everybody in the country is used to it. Well, we really want to know that, because it's obviously a traffic hazard and everything. But we usually don't fine them the first time that we would pick up something. Now, if we're habitually getting in the same goat that gets out and decides it wants to run free or the same, you know, then we would go with a fine. But we usually try to, I mean, I know fences get bad, they get bad, you know, animals get out, and so we try to show some compassion. If there would have been a case where we would have provided food or anything else, then the person who would have claimed them would have paid those costs.
Okay, thank you.
So anyway, the numbers are all in, you can see, you can tell the students are back from our volunteers' numbers, because they've jumped up in September to 287 hours. So we've had a lot of, lot of students in. And our after our animals control calls, again, it's always been in the summertime we've been out. And now it's three in July after hours, or two in July, three in August, and seven in September. So it's just, I don't, there's no rhyme or reason, but, and right now, we have 193 dogs, I should say 100, it's changed, 194.
Cats, right.
You know, we have, our cats, yes, we have lots of cats. And they, this is, this is normal for this time of year. We expect to get a lot in. And our adoptions will kind of, all of a sudden, we'll have several people and we'll have a lot of adoptions and then it kind of fades out. With the holidays coming, it'll be sporadic, but then after the first of the year, it picks up again. So, you know, it's just a matter of, you know, taking stuff in, getting them adopted back out. We had a very good, as you can see, we brought in $14,568.9 for our fundraisers from July, August, and September. The open house did bring in money, we also got a terrific donation of supplies that we needed from the veterinary clinic in Rowland. They brought stuff into us. So for fleas and ticks and all that kind of stuff, which we constantly battle, so that was a very nice gift for us to use too. So, and everybody's gotten their thank yous and we make sure that everybody knows how much we appreciate it. We had well over 300 people to our open house, so we considered that a success. We had also some adoptions that came later afterwards. People looked around, they went home and talked about it and came back. It was just, I don't know if you've heard anything, but the comments we've received from people have been very positive and they were very happy with it. And our traffic has definitely picked up, so lots of new people coming in. So that all helps our adoptions. We have, I just talked about the pigs, obviously, so we're trying to find a place for the 250-pound market pig. It's a gil, so we'll probably try to get her into somebody, so it's very hard with hogs, because you just can't send them into anybody's hog population because of disease. So usually, when they fall off a truck, the people, even if they knew it, they wouldn't want them back. So what we try to do is get these animals into sanctuaries, and we have the farm sanctuary in Iowa. Cindy's husband said, no, she could not have two pigs. And so we're trying to get it into the farm sanctuary in Iowa. And they take animals, they're never killed, they're pets, they take care of them, you know, and that way, we don't have to say that anything was, we had to kill anything or have sold it to be killed.
Would they, do they normally then ask for a donation also that was part of your account?
So sometimes what we'll do is we will like send them with a couple bags of like hog food or whatever species we have, and if there's, if they're short of water bowls or something like that, we use our donation account, we'll send them with stuff to help with this particular thing. It's a good pig, but I must face it, nobody wants a 250-pound pig in their living room, so we're going to try to get into the farm sanctuary, which is an awesome place.
Where is it?
It's in southwest Iowa, and I can't think of the name of the town, it's just a little place, but it is, they take everything. They take animals that are, maybe only have three legs, that have been amputated, they take everything.
So is it private, how is it private now?
Yes, it is private, it's funded by donations. And they have a lot of support, because there's a lot of animal shelters out there that use them, so.
I've donated it before.
It's a pretty cool place. We've been having a lot of respiratory in our cats and ringworm. Ringworm's so common this time of year, respiratory anytime, but we just look at fall and the first leaf that falls, we're like, here comes the ringworm, because we know it's coming. So we are treating them, but we're on the downside of it, so everything's looking really good. It has not slowed up anything that would have been available for adoption, because it was in our back room, so we've not had to close our adoption cat room, so that's kept everything moving. We are having an employee training. I don't know if any of you are familiar with Erin McNani Topp, she's a dog trainer, she's very, very good. She is licensed in about everything you can be for dog training, and this is going to kind of be a, just kind of for us, I think it's important once in a while, just have somebody come in and kind of tell us what we think we know, but also work on new things we can do. And this will be for handling aggressive dogs. So this is, since we're seeing more and more of those all the time, this is something that I thought we could get a lot of benefit out, and it's just kind of like continuing education. So she's coming in from 10 to 12 next Tuesday. So we will have that training and we're kind of looking forward to it, just, she's got a lot of good ideas and we get dogs in with food aggression and, you know, whatever, and we just want new ways to help it, so.
I was going to ask what time, thinking maybe I just might swing my...
Yeah, 10 to 12 on Tuesday.
Gee, I think I'd be somewhere else.
Oh, yeah, well, I think it's done early. But anyway, very good, very good person. And then on November 8th, we have an adoption event at Petco, we are going to be open, so we've had our road closed, I should jump back a little bit. We've had our shelter parking lot closed because of, we're getting our new paving in, black topping. And so I found out as I was walking to the shelter truck this morning, that they thought it might take all week, it's actually going to be able to be driven on tomorrow, so by everybody. However, we'll be open Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday now, but Monday and Tuesday might be, because then they come back and put the top layer on on Monday. And this is kind of dependent on weather. And right now, who knows what we're going to get, so. So anyway, but yes, we have an event over at Petco that November 8th, and we have pictures with Santa at Petco on December 7th, so bring your animals in. This is a good opportunity for us, not only do we get adoptions out of this, but people make donations to the shelter, they will maybe go by and buy a bag of cat food or something, which all helps in our bottom line and, so really, we're setting really well. I mean, it's that time of year, we know that, but we're setting really well.
Have you set the times yet for the November 8th adoption and then the bonus?
No, Kim and I are going to talk about that, she's the manager of Petco. Normally, what we would do is probably either do 10 to 1 or 1 to 4. So we'll put that out there on our Facebook page as soon as we chat about it. I have to go over there today, actually, so. And the pictures with Santa, I think, will be in the morning on December 7th, so hoping we get some people in there, get some pictures taken. And then we're going to take, we have a photographer for the shelter who's done this for years for us, and we're going to take some costumed pictures of the animals to put on our Facebook page, so.
Costumed for Halloween, right?
No, for Christmas, put the Santa suits on them and the, you know, the gingerbread lady and dress them up and hopefully get them adopted, so. I don't know if you have any other questions?
I just, I had one question, because I, when I drove in this morning, so I saw that they were working.
Yes.
In the dusting of snow, pouring the, you said they're doing the blacktop, not asphalt, is that correct?
Well, it's, they're calling it blacktop asphalt, but...
Yeah, I just, obviously, because I'm driving on the road, I can't see down there, do you know, and this, you might not know the answer to this, but did they put any rebar down at all?
I don't think they do with asphalt.
And Darren left, he would be the... I'm not going to ask him and stop.
But I think it's usually just with concrete.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, and there's going to be a lip from where you pull from the new asphalt up to close to the shelter building on the concrete, they're just going to put, until they can get there, they're just going to put a gravel in there. We actually had somebody stop at the shelter yesterday, even though there were all those vehicles, we had it on our Facebook, the county website, and they actually jumped the six-foot concrete, or six-inch concrete thing to go from the, I mean, I'm surprised they didn't ruin their car. I don't know if they saw it, that was what really bothered me, so it was like, oh my gosh, is your car okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, so we'll be, we're very excited, and I know Facilities is looking forward to it, because it'll be much easier for them to maintain than gravel.
Sure.
Yep.
No, that'll be nice, so. All right, that's my only question, thank you.
Let's go back to volunteers, and you said volunteer hours are up?
Yes.
Because the students are back. How are we doing about trying to get regular, I mean, volunteers who are able to be there during holidays and spring breaks, that type of thing? Have we got, increased the number of those volunteers?
No, because most of those students, most of our volunteers now, since school started, are students and most of them go home.
Right.
And so we've got our, you know, we've already made our scheduling for all the holidays and the employees are going to work. We do have volunteers, though, that if they come back early, they know how to get ahold of us and we, they'd be able to come in and help.
I guess, we had just talked long-term, when things get back to normal, because this has been a topic that's been around for three years.
Right.
About trying to get some more volunteers who are not student-based, so I just wondered if we'd made any progress on that.
We have some people that are not stu, that are not students. I think the holidays are a very difficult time for people to, you know, want to commit, because there's a lot going on. However, I will say, like, this Saturday, we're open and we'll have a lot of volunteers in there. Volunteers have gone from not only just walking dogs and playing with the cats, but now they do other tasks as well. They'll clean, they'll do, help us with the litter boxes, they'll do all this other stuff. So that way, our volunteer program is growing, because we do have people that are willing to come in and do more than what they did before.
Okay, well, it's just a goal, as like I said, as we head into the new year, because this will be year three.
Yeah, it's just hard, I mean, everybody's so busy, we encourage people to come out, and that's why, you know, a lot of times, people can't come out because, on Saturday, because they've got other stuff going on, but we do encourage people to come out and volunteer, and I don't want to say the only volunteers we have are students. But, you know, they are the majority, because there's the club at Iowa State, students helping rescue animals. And so they carpool and they have schedules.
Right.
So that's why the majority of them are those kids.
Okay, so the current cat population?
Yeah.
Okay, so the longest residents are?
Well, we lost our longest resident here not too long ago, got adopted to a wonderful home. I would say probably maybe a year. We are now, we have spay and neutered a bunch, we have sent them out to, we have people that will adopt barn cats, so all of our feral cats and cats that don't use the litter box well, or are trying to constantly escape, don't have a lot of socialization. We get those taken care of, and they're given a rabies shot, and people that live on farms or on acreages will adopt them.
Okay.
So that's one way we keep from, we don't have to put anything to sleep, because people that are on acreages usually want the real ones that don't want to be up next to the house, they just want them out kind of doing a job. So it's good for the cats and us also.
Well, I know you've been through so much in the last year with the changes or whatever, but at some point, it might be nice to get back to what we had started a couple of years ago about kind of just every once in a while, taking a look at the, how long the animals have been there.
And I think, I can provide you with that, because I think Debbie keeps track of that.
Is she still tracking it?
Yeah.
So that's good, it's just...
Yeah, we're watching it, so.
Okay.
But we've had, we had that longest resident leave, which was wonderful.
I remember that.
And then we have also another one that recently went home that was older, and then we had a pair of brothers that nobody was adopting that went home, so.
That's wonderful.
I mean, yeah. Thank you. I'm done.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks, Sue.
Thank you.
Hi, Marty.
The upcoming agenda items. Yes.
Okay, now I need to look at these notes. So, one of the things that I'm going to inquire from Carla Webb and Brett McLean is talk to them about the schedule of income, maximum income guidelines, and also what we are paying out on general assistance for a rent for, if someone qualifies for that one-time payment. And I did a little calculation over the weekend and looked at that had we done a 2% increase over the last six years, which is the last time it was changed was 2014 on those guidelines, it would be the equivalent of about a 10% increase. And so I did the calculations based upon in 2018 and 2019, what had actually been paid out. And at the current income guidelines, if we just increased a little bit the amount by 10% that we would pay toward a rent payment, there would have been no change in the budgeted money for 2018, because they didn't use all that was budgeted. In 2019, it had worked out to about $3,000 for the entire year. And then I need to work with Brett and Carla to take a look at what does this mean for year-to-date for us. And then the other thing would be is how many more people would make, have made it, to the extent we know, without putting a lot of research into it, if we might go ahead and take a look at implementing just the 10% increase on, this would be the wages, the maximum incomes, and then also the payout amount. But it just seems since 2014 to have not taken a look at those minimum amounts at all. It seems like we've gotten behind on that. So I, that will be, you know, a few weeks, I'm sure. I haven't reached out to them yet, but a few weeks.
You can ask them to run a proposal?
Yeah, I'm going to talk to them about that. Yeah, so then the next thing, next week, the housing needs, the draft of the housing needs, RFP should be on the agenda, I believe. Leanne, you're still on target, as long as we provide our feedback by, I think, Thursday, right?
Yes.
Or tomorrow, yeah.
I...
Sure.
I did requests for comments by Thursday. Supervisor Merkin, I think you said you weren't able to get them?
I should be able to get them by Thursday, today's not an issue. Yeah, we have a lot of things going on today and tomorrow, but I think I'll get them to you by Thursday.
I should, I have not heard back from Ethan yet, and I'm waiting here back from Dustin and John, but we met last week. And however, I incorporated our discussion comments into the draft that I shared with you.
I, at 1:00 today, and meeting Professor at Iowa State, who has an interest in housing, long-term interest in housing, Dustin Ingrid put me in touch with her, and we're just going to meet also. She has some ideas about what an RFP would possibly include, so fortunately, I was able just to, I'll be able to meet with her this afternoon to get her ideas. There'll still be public comment able, once Leanne has the draft out, but this was just an opportunity to talk to someone from a different perspective.
So you say you're talking to her today?
Today.
So you'll be able to get any comments?
Correct, to be in on Thursday. Correct. Okay, yes.
Good.
Yeah, she was, she was nice enough to accommodate me, so. So those are the things I see coming.
And so, it's a, it might be Friday morning, I have the full draft on the agenda, if I don't get comments by 3:00 on Thursday.
Okay.
Okay.
You're smiling at her and looking nicely, okay, so.
You said you have...
Well, yeah, it's gonna, falls under kind of our liaison reports or, but I was at the MICA meeting last night, and something we'll just have to be watchful in there, being very, doing their due diligence and watching, is funding for the dental clinic. You know, it continues to have some financial challenges and stuff, they are taking...
a significant issue future-wise, depending if they get some things turned around. So I just want to make you aware of that. Not quite sure if I would bring something towards the board or not. We'll wait to see what kind of comes about with what they're working on.
And I believe it was a year and a half ago, I'm kind of looking out there, memory-wise, but the prior board, a prior board, did receive a request, a special request from MICA and I believe we did fund it for a one-time type thing, but there was a, there was comment here at the board table at that time that the sustainability of it had to be looked at.
Right, and that's exactly what they're looking at to ensure sustainability and doing some other outreach and looking at other funding opportunities as well.
So was it two years ago that the, the board received a special request?
I'd have to go back and look.
Okay, it might be nice to know when that was and how much.
Yeah, right.
Because we did grant it as a one-time, yeah?
Yeah, it was a, there was a discussion on a special.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Anything else?
Um, no, unless you're just looking at upcoming meetings?
Go ahead, why don't you start upcoming meetings?
Yeah, so I will be out most of the day on Friday, because it seems like over in Ames, I think I've got about four meetings set up that particular day, so if you need me to help deliver anything, you know, I can certainly run over here and grab it or do whatever on Thursday as well, so just let me know on that. Kind of quickly pull up my calendar. I have a meeting Monday morning and then really don't have anything else going on except for next week, you know, which I can talk about on our board meeting on Tuesday is like I have Spreck, any D cat meeting that's coming up. I will make you aware and it is on my calendar that you can see is the November MICA meeting because we usually meet the last Monday of the month. We're actually going to meet on November 21st, which is a Thursday, it's their yearly annual meeting.
Sure.
And then Friday I was at the Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Center meeting. They're going to have their meeting, because since you hit the holidays, that right after, right after Christmas, they're actually going to have their next meeting on December 13th. They talked a lot about this, some federal language in regards, what's called a, an adult waiver, and so it's serving a different population of individuals and so they're kind of taking a look at what they potentially could or could not do, it could be kind of higher level individuals than locally they may need to be servicing. So that was just kind of some initial discussion. We didn't have a whole lot of information when Tony provided it, so as a board we had several questions, searching it and he'll provide more with the next, with the next meeting.
Bruce, did you have any upcoming meetings?
Well, I did and I had liaison assignment stuff too. You want to just do it now and then we'll go back to public? Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, just want to make...
We skipped over that, we'll get back to it, thanks.
Just want to make note, of course Prairie Rail Trail, the meeting for the northern communities on the Prairie River Trail, that one ended up being canceled, there didn't seem that there was going to be a critical mass there to, to make it have a good discussion that time and will be rescheduled. Herda, two big things. The first one is, is the executive board did work, did meet with the executive director and we talked about budget funding, we went through some numbers. We have very tight controls right now about weekly reports about what's coming in and what's going out. Also discussed some of the staffing situations and so I felt that we had a good, tight program focused on a lot of communication with the executive committee for the next few weeks going forward. The other thing is, is that they have hired someone who will be the Story County Outreach Coordinator and that person begins on November 4th. November 4th is apparently a good day to begin and exciting that on November 15th, already I communicated with Brett McLean and they're going to have a table there at the Veteran's Supermarket for Herda. So that's a good outreach right off the bat, okay? See, Dingo, I attended the ADC board meeting on Friday morning, just to let you know, we did have the presentation on the potential project that is trying to be pitched over there for an entertainment and district moving of parking and a pedestrian bridge. That was really what took place mostly at the ADC. So Saturday morning, I did know this in advance, but I attended one of my Quantian groups relating to organize the food drive and got to hear Erica Place talk from our Conservation Department. She presented the program, she talked about adopt a park training and that particular Quantist group, Town and Country, are going to adopt Tedesco Environmental Learning Center. And this is a very enthusiastic group, many of them are former ISU or current ISU professors and they're going to take care of helping picked up, et cetera, you know, the types of things that the volunteers do. So then on that afternoon on Saturday, I went over to Ziering. They had a fundraiser for their EMS and just like a week ago, I was at the Huxley Dinner on Saturday night, this Saturday I did have the mayor come over and talk to me, plus I had a couple of people in the community and the EMS, obviously, were there having the fundraiser. And I keep on getting asked about Storycom and what kind of support is coming from the county. So I know we heard, while we were at the Story County Economic Development Group meeting on Thursday, you know, the one community said that apparently at least the cost of the radios are out and they're having to make a decision by December 31st about are they going to sign that particular lease or what are they going to do? So I'm sitting here anxiously, I know you're working hard on it, Lynda, and looking forward to, like, like you think out in the community is, is about when will those numbers be available, about what the county may have as far as plans, so we can start to talk about if, if we're able to provide any support.
Well, why don't I just answer that?
Okay.
I have a meeting tomorrow where I'm getting some updated information. What I've looked at is the amount of money that the county has bonded for and trying to get a handle on the infrastructure budgets, which tend to be a moving target because they're still working on the towers. So we don't have a final, you know, we, we have a, we have how much money we borrowed, we've got, we're still working on getting that all put together. Also, the operating budgets are coming together, but it is kind of a moving target because it's being designed and developed, we don't have all the sites yet and numbers change. My, so I've been working with Dean McKenna, I've been working with other people on the working group to kind of get those budgets to a point where I felt like I had a level of comfort of bringing a proposal to this board. And I'm not there yet, but I'm working on that. And I know that the local entities are looking at the county and asking what we can do. I think there had been discussion about that previously, but until we really have the numbers, you know, and know exactly what, you know, what is of that 3 million we're going to need for the infrastructure and for our own equipment, I don't think we can say how much we can, we have available for some of the smaller entities. And I do know that this has been talked about for quite some time, that, you know, the, the fire agencies and EMS agencies have known that there would be new radios. Some of them have it in budgets, some of them I'm not sure where they are, but we're working on it.
I understand, well, I appreciate it.
And I was, one thing I was going to say is I hope, and probably not next week, but hopefully by the week after, that we would have a presentation about where the Storycom budget was, so.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else?
Uh, no.
Okay. A lot of stuff has happened in the last week, a lot of stuff's going to happen in the upcoming week. Last Tuesday, we met with the Ames Historical Society, they talked to us about their plans to hopefully build and they would like to build a new building on the site where they are now. A lot more to come, I'm sure. I think it was Thursday night, I attended a strategic planning session, the Prairie Rivers of Iowa Board, and that's interesting in terms of the future of that agency. I've also attended a couple of meetings that I thought were very interesting that have to do with government and politics in general, and that was Better Angels Skills Workshop and also a film about that. And what Better Angels is, is basically a movement nationwide to try to kind of reach the partisan divide and get people talking to each other and seeking common ground. I find it really interesting. I invited some other local officials to come to some of them and I know you were at the Skills Workshop. I really hope that we can do something in Story County about that. Tonight, we have a Grant V Drainage District meeting and public hearing on a proposed annexation that will start at, I believe it's 6 o'clock in this room and, is it 6?
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock and it will go until it's done.
I anticipate a full house.
I think we will have a full house. We've already gotten a lot of interest in the meeting. Tomorrow I have EOC orientation, Thursday I see that, you have that too?
I have that too.
Okay, good. Thursday, Thursday I know there's a mission statement, I think our first for employees who are going to be on the mission statement group, there's going to be the first session there.
Is that Thursday or tomorrow?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Okay, I'll check my calendar, make sure I've got it on the right day. Thank you.
Okay, it's Thursday, 12:30 to 4:30 in this room. And the board is continuing interviews for several, volunteers for several boards and commissions, that's been a great, great thing and we've got some more applications, I think, coming in. And next Monday I have Conservation Board and next Monday also, we have a new employee starting. Sandra King, our Director of External Operations, is starting Monday, so we'll welcome her and we're going to give her a, a week to get her feet on the ground, get her, get her email access and get everything put together and then, and then talk about having her get out to meet people around county. And boy, I think that might be all I've got. Yeah. Oh, Lisa, I'm going to ask you, I have on my calendar, 1 o'clock Monday, a CICS Complex Services meeting, do you know anything about that?
I don't know that I do. I'll have to look at my calendar, I...
I would, I, when I was on the board, I was on this group that was just meeting to talk about that and I'm willing to continue to do that just out of my own interest, but I thought you should know about that.
1 P.M.?
1 P.M. And it's at Human Services Center Conference Room, East Second Floor.
I'll put up my calendar and probably show up as well.
Okay.
This is on my calendar board, just so I have an idea of what's, what they're doing.
Yeah, I think that would be a good one to do and I, I...
Thank you for making me aware.
Yeah, I've been meeting you all week, but haven't gotten it, so, okay. Anything else?
Good cause.
We have public forum number two, however, that we skipped over. That's comments from the public, aren't on, not on the agenda. Are there any members of the public who would like to address us? We can't do anything because, on any concerns because of the requirements, the open meetings law, but we might do something in the future. Any members of the public? I'm staring at the gentleman in the yellow jacket.
That's right.
Do I have to come up there?
Yes. And please state your name.
I think that'd be good, for the record.
For the record.
People in Marshalltown are watching.
Margaret Chitty, rural Nevada. Why don't we be the first to wish you Merry Christmas? Somebody had to do it, might be me, and good luck tonight.
Thank you.
You will have a boisterous meeting.
Um, last night, well, yesterday afternoon, I was poring through everything and dug out all of the old files, okay? Saw your handwriting in some of the files that I'd accumulated and then last night was reading and going over things also. So I'm going to thank you and Supervisor Sanders, former Supervisor Sanders and former Supervisor Clinton, because there have been many supervisors who have dealt with this issue and investigated. So thank you for that and thank you to the other two, so.
I had, two weeks ago, was in Fort Collins with an economic development crew from Ames. Rick was there too, we had a wonderful time. Should have go, I would encourage you, one, both of you, some of you, I know several of you went to Washington DC, but I would also say you should be in the room, in that group, in whatever setting they choose, because it would, the takeaways are both personal and professional and I'm encouraging on a budgeting basis to, when you decide where you're going to spend your training dollars, I would say, put some money there and show up. It's, it's, it's both entertaining and enlightening. That said, had a conversation with people, stakeholders in your meeting tonight and, you know, there's some sharp edges. I don't envy you the fact that you have to set up there as trustees tonight to do what, you know, you think is the best thing. Hold the county as harmless as you can, but do the right thing along the way and if those two can align, you're pretty good administrators.
Well, thank you for that, yeah.
Yeah, because this is not an easy thing and it's why it's taken so long. Ames is now part of the process and they have a standing here that you have to acknowledge and you want to do the right thing because if you look at it with today's eyes, it's a bunch of farm ground. I'll give it 10 years, give it 20 years, see what it becomes and that's really, you're just putting yourself in a position to do the right thing for what the future holds, not necessarily what tomorrow holds.
Wise words.
Other than that, I'm just here in town and, I live here, and I was stopping and going to go vote, don't forget to vote. Good to see you, heard good things about you and then continue on your path. It's an educational process, Lisa. I want to talk to you about something about NAMI, but that's a personal aside, so.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, I've got some time if you want to.
It's the first meeting I think I've been back to and keep up the good work. You fight the good fight and you'll do the best you can and I think the, the public will see it, so. Let's have a good Tuesday.
Thanks, Marty. Thank you, glad to see you.
If there's no other business then, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
I'll second. Good. Goodness?
Aye.